Good evening, everyone. I'll bring our special meeting of the York County School Board to order. It's Monday, December the 8th. Before we really get started, Dr. George isn't with us this evening. His wife is recovering from a little bit of surgery and he has an awards event with his son. So I think he's in an important place right now, supporting his son. So he'll get caught up on everything we discuss this evening. With that, we have a number of presentations this evening, and so we're going to go right into those. And a busy agenda this evening, so the strategic plan status update, which we always enjoy these as we move forward, looking at our strategic plan. So, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Medford. Thank you, school board members. This evening, our new chief human resource officer, Mr. Carroll, is going to give to present a strategic plan status update on Goal Three, specific to position review, employee recruiting, and support. Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Chairman Medford, members of the board, Dr. Shandor, good evening. I would like to first take the liberty of thanking everybody in the York County School Division community that have welcomed me so warmly. I look forward to the work that we're going to do together for the coming years. Tonight, I will be sharing with you a status update on components of Goal Three of the division's strategic plan, which is to recruit, hire, retain, and support a diverse staff that meets our highest standards. We're going to begin with compensation. First objective is to revise or develop standard operating procedures for periodic review and maintenance of a competitive, non-licensed compensation package. I'm happy to report that the SOPs are finished and reviews have been completed on the first two of three non-licensed groups, and the last is under review for the fiscal '16 budget. Next, we move to diversity statistics. You see the percentage of minority staff hired within three position categories. Let's see. I'll help you out there. Working from right to left, the percentage of our latest cohort of licensed new hires has risen from 9.3% to an impressive 19.5% for 1450. Likewise, after an off-year last year, our administrative positions have risen to 32.5%. And finally, our total licensed staff, after a three-year dip, has risen above the baseline year to 12.9%. I will be, I will be, next week, begin to drill down on how this looks for our core teacher workforce. And if we look at our recruitment efforts, we have, part of the reason for our, I believe that our percentages have gotten so, have increased so much, have been due to our recruitment efforts. We advertised in two publications, one online, in which we were the featured employer, and we are currently committed to ten job fairs, of which three take place at historically black colleges and universities. Next, we move to new employee support. And you see here that the next objective refers to new employee support, which is measured by stakeholder surveys. Board members, you will find detailed answers in your binders, and if you click on the, where it says "Eight of the Eleven Measures" right here, that will take you to that document. I'm happy to report great satisfaction by this most important group to our retention efforts. As you see, our lowest reported responses were at 4.3 on a five-point Likert scale. Eight of the eleven measures rated 4.5 or above, indicating strong agreement with support efforts. And finally, the average response was a 4.6. This is impressive, given that on a five-point Likert, survey takers tend to gravitate to the middle. So these responses are strong. Also, however, the, I'm sorry, however, the purpose of these surveys is to identify points of continuous improvement. Both of the 4.3 responses indicate growth opportunities in the area of additional training and administrative and operational issues. Topics are being prepared for accordant upload for training at employee convenience, and that should start in January. And an accordant new teacher orientation series will be also available at that time, and this supports a department objective to add five new training videos to accordant each year. And finally, the last objective regards performing exit interviews and using the resulting information for continuous improvement. We have exceeded our goal of a 60% response rate on exit surveys, and here I've highlighted here the exact response rate by employee classification and the top reasons for employee separation, other than the top reason, which are retirements for both classes. There is consistency in both categories, with retirement, relocation, and family obligation being the top three for each, and then they differ with license leaving for an equivalent position in another Virginia district and non-licensed taking another position outside education. Although we are talking about just a few examples in those last categories, I will be making efforts to drill down into the possible reasons for those departures to ascertain if we had any control over those losses. Thank you for this opportunity. This concludes my report, and I'll take any questions that you have.
Does any board members have any questions?
This is kind of curious. Do you have any information that say today that not as many people are pursuing a career in education as they did maybe six or seven years ago?
I don't have that in front of me, but I will tell you that that is, that is nationwide, and that is a trend that's happening, and especially in states where they're being particularly difficult on teachers as far as salary and whatnot. But nationwide, there is a trend down in attracting solid candidates for teacher education programs.
Thank you, sir.
I had a question, and this goes into the position reviews for the non-licensed. And I don't expect this information tonight, in January, when we really start to dig into the budget and especially the pay compensation. I know two of the three groups of non-licensed positions have been completed for position reviews. If you can give us a number or a percentage of how many of those non-licensed positions were revamped, received a regrade and increase, that would be helpful as we look at the compression issue with licensed and non-licensed employees.
Absolutely.
And my question or concern focuses on the exit interview. We had a lot of concern last year about that and why people were leaving. 60%, I guess I put you on, on the spot as, as new to us. But is 60 a good way of looking at that? Or when you, when you tell me we have a response from at least 60% of the people, that's another 40% that, that left that cared not to respond. And is there a way of improving that?
Okay, well, our, our goal was to get at least 60. We exceeded that to 68%. But, you know, your point is taken that is there a way to make sure that they take it? These are distributed electronically, so we're at their, at their.
Their mercy, yeah.
Do we offer, excuse me for everything, but do we offer incentives for them to?
$50.
Okay. A question you can't answer. Someone around the table might be able to, because it goes to the recruiting events that we put on. We used to, as a division, have our own recruiting fair, our own educational fair, where we, people came to us, to our own fair. It's been years and years since I think we've had those. Would that be, when was the last time, Dr. Guy, we had our own?
I would say at least three years, if not more. Three years.
Three years. Do we, something we look at, you know, because I know that we go externally to look at, you know, at different recruiting events and stuff, but I know it was really highly attended. I mean, I attended a few of those, and good gracious, I mean, there were, there were three or 400 people coming out to those that would, because they want to work and teach in York County. So maybe y'all can reopen that file someplace and see if it's something you may want.
I think that's something we'll definitely take a look at. I want to look at all the recruiting efforts. However, you, you definitely do not want to abandon going to those job fairs because you can identify talent early and maybe jump the gun on other districts or divisions, sorry. Got to break that habit.
All right, thank you.
And welcome aboard. We're happy to have you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we look forward to, nothing but positives. And, but do look forward to getting to work with you as you join the leadership team here in YCSD, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
All right, so that concludes our strategic plan update. If we can add that to our folder. Proposed changes to the program of studies this time of year, when we start looking at deletions or additions and changes, so.
All right, next, our director of secondary instruction, Dr. Kip Rogers, will provide our annual update to the program of studies. Dr. Rogers.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Good evening, Chairman Medford, school board members, members of cabinet, and members of the community. Thank you so much for allowing me an opportunity to provide you with proposed changes to our 2015-2016 program of studies. Before I get started, I'd like to walk you through a couple of the documents that you have in front of you. In addition to a hard copy of the PowerPoint presentation, you also have two additional documents, the first of which is called the Program Changes to the 2015 Program of Studies document, and that's document number one. And this first document is separated into three sections, so I wanted to point out to you. Separated into three sections. The first section is, of course, the proposed new courses, and this year we have seven. And the second section of this document actually begins on page three. And the second section outlines the revised course codes, course titles, or course description changes, and we also have a couple of programmatic changes as well. And then the last section of this document is actually on the last page, which is page six, and it just lists the four deleted courses that we are proposing for deletion. So that's document number one. The second document that you have in your packet is the Program of Studies FY16 Proposed Additions, Cost and Rationale document. And this document will, we'll get in tandem to the first document for the proposed new courses. And I'd like to direct your attention to the note that's at the very top of this document that states staffing at the secondary level is formula-based, and as such, no additional staffing needs are noted below. And additionally, existing budgets will support the cost of the materials and curriculum writing. So those are the documents that we'll be reviewing throughout the course of this presentation. And before I begin with the actual presentation, I want to give you just a little bit of background for your knowledge, as well as for those that are listening in the community. We look at the Program of Studies. It's reviewed, and it's revised, and it's published annually. And we solicit recommendation from all of our secondary instructional staff in the fall. And then a huge committee comes together that's consisted of our secondary principals, our secondary counseling directors, our instructional staff at SBO, our program coordinators at the International Baccalaureate Program, as well as our SOA program. And we sit around and we have conversations about the proposed recommendations, and we collectively decide which of those recommendations to move forward for consideration into the program of studies. So we're very excited about that process. And just to remind you, last year, we had a major revision to the structure of the program of studies to make it easier for our students, our families, as well as our staff, to navigate that process. So we will continue to work with our communications department, as well as our instructional technology department, to make sure that progress still moves forward. Now, the presentation in and of itself is separated into three areas. We will talk about our proposed new courses, the proposed revisions, as well as the deletions, and we'll follow pretty much the document one in order. Now, for the proposed new course offerings, and I'm beginning on page one. I have both documents actually, so you can follow along as well. There are several new proposed courses, and the fourth course is the Marketing Management Course that I'd like to share with you. This course is designed to assist our high school seniors who plan to enter careers in marketing and business management, or even who may be interested in entrepreneurship. Now, this course is different from the two existing marketing courses that we have currently in that this course focusing more on leadership, management, and supervision of the marketing functions that are covered in the first two courses. The first two courses cover personal selling, advertising, vision of merchandising, as well as market planning. And the majority of the costs associated with that $3,750 is going to be, would be used for materials. If I could direct your attention to the second and third courses, which is actually our ESL rigor courses, those two courses are being piloted at Grafton Middle School and York High School. The courses are being offered to our middle and high school students who have an English proficiency level of one or two, as measured by the WIDA, which is the World Class Instructional Design Assessment. These students are provided with intensive language acquisition instruction to support them with the English language during the program. And more specifically, the students are provided with explicit language instruction that's designed to improve their literacy skills, content understanding, and they use word study, oral language, and various writing activities to accomplish those goals. And the costs associated with that are listed in your document, as well as up there. The next course is the AP Music Theory course I'd like to share with you. This course would provide students who are interested in taking advanced-level music electives an opportunity to do so and receive weighted credit. Both students and parents have assured that there's a great interest in taking advanced-level music courses. And however, sometimes they shy away from taking those courses because those courses sometimes have an adverse effect on their class rankings. There are no costs associated with curriculum writing for that course as the College Board already has curriculum written for it. So the costs associated with that, and it's $5,500, are directly related to the training that would be required of the teachers who would be teaching that course. The next course came as a result of our SOA staff proposing this course. It's Improvisation and Sketch Comedy. This is a non-weighted course that's uniquely designed to offer our SOA and Bruton High School students the opportunity to enhance their performance skills by developing spontaneous thinking, creativity, writing, as well as collaboration. The proposal for that course promises to be fun and exciting, and will use a short form of games and improvisational exercises in order to help students master the skills of improvisational theater.
We may all need that.
Students have an opportunity to work on idea generation, sketch structure, character development, and storytelling progression. And the costs associated with that are very, are minimal in that they only require the cost of curriculum writing and a very minimal amount for materials. The next course, we had quite a bit of conversation about this course, where it would be offered, is Spanish Conversation and Culture. This course would provide students who have already taken AP Spanish with an opportunity to continue to utilize their Spanish-speaking skills in a real-world context without losing a year prior to their continuing in college. The Program of Studies Committee, again, we had quite a bit of conversation about where the placement would be because it was originally presented to be offered before AP Spanish. And the committee felt that if we were to offer it before, it would discourage some students from taking AP Spanish afterward because they will have already have earned a weighted credit. The course would be conducted solely in Spanish and designed to provide an advanced, advanced students with the opportunity to refine and perfect proficiency in all four language skills of listening, speaking, reading, as well as writing. And the last course is, that's being recommended, is IB Chemistry High Level. This course would be offered as a two-year international baccalaureate course and would provide an additional science option for our international baccalaureate students, particularly those that are gifted in the area of sciences. There are no curriculum writing costs associated with this course either because the curriculum is already written by the International Baccalaureate Organization, and the costs associated with that are primarily that of the training that will be required for the teacher who would be teaching that particular course. So now I'd like to direct your attention to page three of document one, where we will talk about the proposed changes to the program of studies.
Dr. Rogers, could I just make a few comments about that?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to commend you guys, and thank you so much for the AP Music Theory. I had several constituents from District Two, the Grafton area, requesting this because you have SOA, you have AP Art History, but you did not have anything music-wise. And so they will be thrilled to know that they'll, that we'll have a new option. Also, the Spanish Conversation and Culture, I think that's a great idea because a lot of sophomores and juniors can take AP Spanish, so that will give them another opportunity before they go off to college. I had a question about IB Chemistry.
Yes.
Will this be combined with an AP Chemistry class?
I don't know the answer to that question right off because I'm not sure how it was planned on being structured as they schedule at York High School, but I can certainly provide that information to Dr. Guy.
Great, thank you. Thanks.
And since you started on some questions, I guess mine, I got two questions. One, first of all, I heard you mention that like SOA came to y'all at Central Office with a proposal for a course addition. Or do students, or where do the other ideas come from to add a new course in the program of studies? Is it strictly from our staff bringing it, or is it student-driven in some cases? Is it just, you see where career paths are headed or going, the need? I mean, how does that, how do y'all zero in on a focus on that?
Well, that's a great question, and we do solicit input from all staff. And what happens is we send out an informational memo that's sent out to principals, and principals ask their leadership team and sometimes their teachers for ideas for courses. And oftentimes, that does come from teachers having an interest based on what students share with them, what parents may mention to them, what they may be interested in, in teaching. So there, the process is extensive, and that's putting it mildly in terms of how we collect information from teachers regarding new course options. They have to do research to share need, and oftentimes, that's based upon input that they've gotten from others, colleagues, as well as from students and parents.
And I think it was important, because I wanted to find out if students are having some, you know, role in that, because if, if there's a desire to have something, they feed it to their teacher, and the teacher sees that more and more students want to see a development of a program, then they end up at Central Office at some point to be evaluated. The next question is, the Bruton High School medical little piece that we started and grew with, has there been any discussion about expanding that to other high schools in the division?
We've not had any structured conversations around that. We'd love for it to continue.
I mean, that was something that I think I asked a question over the past couple of years, and I'll just, I'll ask it again, and that is, I think that a lot of careers head that direction. And yes, New Horizons offers some programs that students can sign up for, but I think that Bruton saw the value of that program. But, you know, what kind of cost would it look like if we were to add it?
It would be a staff member, because the requirements for the teacher who teaches that course, not only do they have to have the teacher licensure, but they also have to have the medical background. And so the staff that you have available in the community to teach the course are limited. And additionally, it would be a staff person, or at least a part-time staff person when you started the program at the school. So, so as you look at an FTE position at multiple schools, that would be the associated costs.
When the program of studies go out and other students in other schools see that Bruton has that offering, has there been any level of, hey, we wish it was here? I mean, have you all gotten any correspondence from?
We have not.
Not, and, and our guidance folks are, excuse me, our school counselors are very good, typically speaking, if they, if they perceive a need, if, if information is shared, just like Ms. Kerski shared earlier, when parents had shared with her and had also shared with folks in the school, the lack of AP Music was something that parents definitely shared. And so when they perceive that there's an opportunity that's not available to their child that is available to other students, even though students can go up there and they, they could become part of the Bruton program, most students aren't going to choose to change their school, particularly in high school. But no, we've not gotten any feedback from any of our school counselors.
One other question, if I may. Document two, you drew our attention to the statement indicating no additional staffing needed.
Yes.
Is there a concern of increasing teacher workload?
Right now, we'll say no.
That's, I know that's not a fair question, but.
Well, the, the proposals were brought forth with the current staffing in mind, with that recognizing that they were not asking for additional staffing, so.
And, and if I can add to that, the other piece that I would share is very often, these recommendations are coming from the teachers themselves. For example, if you look at marketing management, that's coming from the teachers that are teaching the marketing program. So they're certainly aware of, and typically speaking, they share with their colleagues in other buildings as well when they're making a recommendation, because they know that it's going to be, if I'm putting something forth at TAB High School, for example, if I've shared it with my colleagues in the other school and they're in support of it, they're going to have conversations with their administrators before they even come to program of studies.
I guess I'm, I'm, I'm looking at just the course of the day and how it lines up. And will that teacher need a stipend for additional hours? It all fits into the teacher's workday. It's where I, what I'm looking at.
To piggyback off of that, okay, let's look at the Spanish Conversation and Culture class. Is that going to mean one less AP Spanish, or Spanish Four, or Spanish Three, so a teacher can teach that? And will then that mean additional students in the Spanish Three class?
Ultimately, it could, because the schools are going to make a decision based on the number of students that they have that have signed up for a course. Typically speaking, we use the number of 15 as to whether or not a course makes. But depending on the staffing that I have in a particular content area, that, that information is going to help us make a decision in terms of whether or not we're going to teach, whether or not we're going to offer a stipend period based on our allocation. Because the schools have an allocation formula, and so they may use a stipend in one area versus another, depending on need.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's take a look at page three of Document One, and we'll continue on with our proposed revisions. The four courses that are listed there, Applied English, History, Math, and Science, those are all being recommended for course code changes to provide greater consistency among the course codes that are listed, and also allow teachers to have one gradebook for all of their students. Previously, there were several course codes that required teachers, teachers to manage several gradebooks in Aspen, which is our student management system, the electronic gradebook portion of it. The Dance Arts Three and Four, we are recommending that we revise this to allow students to earn weighted credit for those courses in order to provide consistency among similarly weighted courses that are in the SOA program. We had a lot of discussion about this in our Program and Studies Committee meeting, and this was the only course that was not weighted at the time. And as such, we were inadvertently saying that this course was not as rigorous as the other courses when, in fact, the students do participate in quite a bit of activities outside of the, the regular scheduled courses as well. So we are recommending that we add weight to those courses. And the next two, the last two, Directed Study Technology of Education and Cooperative Office Education, the Virginia Department of Education is recommending a course code change for those courses. The next two courses, Economics and Personal Finance, we are recommending, well, we need to add a B to the Economics and Personal Finance course code as it's being taught as a blended learning course, which means those courses include online learning components in order to meet the virtual learning graduation requirement that began with last year's ninth grade students. And lastly, on this slide, is the Ready, Set, Go course, which is a popular middle school course. And actually, a teacher presented the course code description change recommendation as she found it, the current one, being limiting because it was somewhat prescriptive with the projects and activities that were being recommended in the course description. So the recommendation there is to adjust that description. The next few courses are revisions that come from New Horizons. And the three courses that are listed in that first block were adjusted from two-year programs to one-year programs. And if you'll notice, the first two are highlighted in purple, and actually, those were shared with you last spring back in June, that those two courses had programmatic changes. And since then, they've added the Medical Assistant course, being removed from a two-year program to a one-year program. The Computer Systems Technology course is just a simple title change where it used to be called Computer Networking. And then the last two courses on that slide, Veterinary Science and Introduction to Electronics and Robotics, are simple course code changes. The next few course revisions are from Thomas Nelson Community College. And you may remember that in order to meet the requirements for accreditation, Thomas Nelson Community College instituted several changes to their dual enrollment program beginning this fall. And as such, the information was shared with our schools in, back in July. And part of the changes that come from Thomas Nelson Community College were prerequisites for the three courses that are listed up there, Computer Information Systems One, Web Design One and Two, and Design Multimedia and Web Technology. So we are recommending that we make that adjustment. The last two courses in the bottom row, Marketing Two Co-op and Marketing Two OE, those need to have the references to dual enrollment deleted as Thomas Nelson Community College no longer offers the Marketing Education course, which is the course that students need to register at Thomas Nelson in order to receive dual enrollment credit for that course. And then lastly, we'll look at the courses that are being recommended for deletion. And the first course is a YCSD course, the Advanced Theater Arts with Practicum. And the recommendation is to eliminate the Practicum portion of that course as this is a double-weighted course. In other words, students get two-weighted credit for that course, and most of the students that take that course are typically 11th grade students, and they're taking advanced placement courses as well as other advanced courses. And that course adds an additional 140 hours outside of the regular work that there's to do during the, the regular course. So SOA staff is recommending that we eliminate the Practicum portion of that. And additionally, transportation is sometimes difficult for 11th grade students to have to do the additional assignments outside of that. The next three courses are Basic Carpentry. Now, that's not the same course as the Carpentry course that moved from a two-year program to a one-year program. That's a different course that they're eliminating. And then the Basic Mechanics and Salon Assistant courses are also being deleted from their program, and they were both part of the Intercession Workplace Skills Training Program that is no longer in operation at New Horizons. And that concludes my proposed recommendations for the 2015-16 Program and Studies, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Questions? My last one is more of a general one. Last year, we were sitting here this time making changes of recommendations for this year. Those recommendations from, that we instituted from this past school year, have they worked? Have they not worked? How do you, how do you evaluate whether what we approved for this year worked, and how do we go back to the drawing board?
That's a great question, and the last time I was here, I think I gave a report on the middle school courses that were instituted. So we're, we're monitoring, and there are plans underway to get a temperature check on how those two courses, the new courses are going. So we're, we're progress monitoring along the way. We didn't have any courses that were recommended for deletion last year, I don't think we did. So in that aspect, we didn't. And most of the changes were course code changes and things of that nature, which are very helpful, particularly, for example, with the course code change for the special education courses, we're eliminating work for teachers so they don't have to manage so many gradebooks.
Thank you.
Paige, you might better answer this question for me. New Horizons, and don't go anywhere yet. All right, New Horizons, you know, every year, we always reflect on, you know, how many slots are we going to have and what the budget, the kind of New Horizons builds your budget based on how many slots the division puts forth. Do we know, or do, have we ever looked at how many of our students in YCSD that want to go to New Horizons to take one of these courses that they offer in a Career Tech Path that don't get in because we don't have a slot? I mean, I wonder, just a curiosity question, I guess, to, I mean, do we turn down a lot, a lot not get approved because of just the availability at New Horizons?
That's a great question, and this is my fifth year, and you're kind of, I've not had a single counselor approach me with that concern. It doesn't mean it didn't happen, but I've not had that question come and say, we need, we'd like to get more slots, what can we do?
And that's a positive. I mean, that, I like hearing that because I would think that it'd be devastating for a student that has a career possibility and interest, and all of a sudden, you know, hey, it's not available. You know, maybe they're, they find a second choice or a third choice, maybe.
When the classes become, reach a certain level, they go and look at the applications, and any student that may not make it into that are offered another course to take or another career. But we, since we're a part of six school divisions, we only have so many slots before we reach capacity. So they're getting more selective. All the students who are applying are getting better and better all the time.
And there are some programs that are, that have very high interest.
Does New Horizons have an open house where high school students can come and see the facility and, and, and get more of an on-hand approach to what's okay?
Yes, they do.
Because I know I've heard of a lot of students who are interested but yet hesitant to leave their home school and go there for one or two classes, and especially if they think, well, I'm college-bound, maybe I should take that AP class instead of automotives, even though I really like tinkering with my car, you know?
When we toured the facility, when Mr. Minter and I toured the facility in October, there were several students there who were college-bound, who were there taking many, many courses in areas of interest, so...
It was one of the reasons they revamped some of the two-year courses, the one-year courses, because of schedule problems and just what you were talking about. And plus, there are some students got into something and said, this is not my career, I'd like to try another one. So it gave greater options.
All right. That was the only question I had, so. Any other questions on the Program of Studies? This will come back to us for approval next week.
That's correct.
And then they'll go to print and...
Thank you, Dr. Rogers.
Thank you. All right, our next item is our, once again, another look at our CIP Capital Improvement Plan for 2016 through 2025. Where will you be in 2025? That's a question we all ask ourselves. Dr. Shandor?
At this point, we're going to move to our Capital Improvements Program, and I'm going to turn to Mr. Jarrett to provide a few opening comments.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Just to kind of bring everybody up to speed on this, we started this process back in October when Dr. James presented to the school board the 10-year Facilities Masters Plan, and that just got received a full briefing, if you will, at that work session. Well, that same month, we, we, staff went back and did, continued to work on the FMP. And then in November, we had a work session with the school board on the CIP, which was basically just taking the FMP, folding it into that document. And we also had a public forum on the Capital Improvements Program in that, at that point as well. And then we move into December, excuse me, we're into November. In November, we also had a public hearing on the superintendent's proposed CIP, which is out on the street at this moment. And as we now move, start moving into December, tonight's work session is another opportunity for the school board to discuss the CIP, in particular, any projects or items you would like to get more additional information on. And the next steps in this process would be after tonight, we would finalize the school board resolution to approve the CIP so that when you come in at your December 15th meeting, you will actually be approving a CIP that will then be transmitted over to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration during the budget process. Now, that process goes on all the way up into the first part of April. So we won't really know where we stand on the CIP until that point in time. But this is the, this is the first step in that process of getting it in to, for consideration by the Board of Supervisors. So that's kind of where we are at this point, and I would open it up for discussion. Any items you would like to talk about? Or, Dr. Shandor, anything you would like to add?
One thing I want to add is, as you know, last week, we had a joint session with the Board of Supervisors in this room, and Tim Cross from the county provided us a lot of detailed information and projections, looking forward to timing of a new school. So those are some things that we want to make sure that we give you the opportunity to discuss tonight. I'm going to continue to work closely with Mark Carter, and Dr. James and his team are going to collaborate with county staff as we move forward, so I wanted to make sure that we had a chance to discuss that this evening.
And I know that, I mean, we had a fantastic joint meeting with our Board of Supervisors. It was a breath of freshness to get around the table and really have the same focus of what we were looking at. And then when this came up, I know that the Chair, Vice Chair of their board, and the Chair and Vice Chair of our board, along with their interim superintendent, I mean, our interim county administrator and our superintendent, getting together on a regular basis through the budget process so that we're, we stay on the same plate. And then future joint work sessions between us and the Board of Supervisors as we continue moving forward. The only question I have, and I'll, I'll bring this up because I know that we're, we're advocating for the fact that we're going to have this increased student growth because of the growth in the county and, you know, the new elementary school. If, for some reason, that doesn't get approved, all right, which could push us into having to put trailers on school properties, well, they're not cheap. I mean, we saw what the one cost us at DARE Elementary, we had to roll in that big humongous contraption we had to use during that process. And I know that our operating budget probably couldn't take a large hit like that. So if they don't, if the school A and E, or the school itself, gets pushed to where it's not on this thing, do we need to come back and say, we need trailers put into the CIP for a short-term fix? I hate to use, I mean, to say trailers on school properties, we really don't want to ever go back to that route again. But I think, you know, if we ended up having to do that, do we have to go back and maneuver? I don't know. That would be the only thing that would be, if we don't get this, then we're going to have to find something over here.
And that's where your ongoing discussion with the two boards, Chair and Vice Chair and Superintendent and County Administrator, will continue to discuss. That's you all having to help them understand that because even where they may not put that school into play, the trailers do cost.
They do.
And so, and then they will go away, and you still have spent extra money that you didn't need to spend, and that's where I think it's going to be a job for you all to help them understand that.
Exactly.
And that financial.
Mr. Medford, you have in the proposed CIP in fiscal year '17, there is, yeah, there's $500,000 being proposed for trailers, for temporary modular units, if you will. Last year, that amount was $200,000, and that got approved by the Board of Supervisors as a planning figure. But because of the immediacy of the need, that number's been bumped up to $500,000 in FY '17.
I just know that it won't get as much, though.
It will not, it will not. But I, I will tell you, we were talking about this earlier today, just to set up a trailer, it's like $12,000 just to set a trailer up. And that's not even including the lease of it.
And then you run your electricity and all that good stuff.
That's exactly right. And then to tear it down or to move it down the road when you're finished with that trailer, because we generally lease these, that's another 10 to 12,000 dollars.
And the $500,000 that you're talking about that you've put in, that's related to the possible increased enrollment at McGruder in Yorktown.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
I guess...
Well, wherever the trailers would be needed, and based on the fact that we don't have a new school in that end of the county, with those trailers could end up on this end, and then moving students this way because we have space for those. So it, it depends on really where the need is at that point.
And see with trailers, you know, you move it, you move a lot of trailers onto a site, at what point are you mandated to put plumbing in? Because a lot of, and these kids are having to come out of their classroom in a trailer into the building to use restroom facilities. It's a safety issue, it's a climate issue, it's, it's a lot of just different things that, that we just don't want to get back into having to deal with again, especially when you're talking about multiple units on a, on a property. Then you got to find the space on a property to put...
Last week, I think Mr. Serenbo mentioned that we also have the Commonwealth Green in District Two that's popping up, and those children would be zoned for Grafton-Bethel. I know I would like an update on the situation there. I know they've already broken ground, and they're, they're, they're going ahead with that development. So I'd like to know exactly where Grafton-Bethel stands and if they would need trailers.
And the only other thing I would add to it, over the course of years, we as a board have always looked at community schools, short travel distances if at all possible. We see the communities coming on board, and they're, they're being built. We need to act so that we can put kids in schools versus bouncing them around zoning, rezoning to accommodate trailers. It's, it's, we don't need to do that to our kids. So it's, if at all possible, if we can get a new school coming on, wherever it will meet the needs, is, is, is where we need, I think we need to go.
I think our practice has always been, and Dr. James, you can refresh my memory, but we already know where that development's zoned before they even break ground. But we've had to make adjustments before, before families started moving in. Naval weapons, I guess, would be an example of that.
Yes.
So, so our staff has always focused on that because you're right, well, if there's no room in the building, you know, in the end, so...
I know this is a hot topic to bring up, but is rezoning something that we're going to have to look at in the next five years, if not sooner?
We've, we've had discussions about this. It's always an option that, especially when you bring on a new school, it does become something that gets discussed, I think, at that point.
Not because you want to, you're pushed into a corner, you don't have any choices.
Well, it's academic space.
I think if it's new school, that's one issue. If it's no new school, you're putting up mobile units at one school to handle the growth. So for right now, I'm moving a group of students over here until we can get something built, and then we move them back, and that's the piece.
That's disruptive.
That we have seen and done in the past, but I don't think we need to do that again.
All right, we'll keep, we'll keep monitoring this, but I think next week, when we approve our CIP, it becomes ours, we'll send it over to the Board of Supervisors, we'll keep our communication open with them, and our dialogue, and we'll have our meetings, and...
One quick question.
Yes.
Can we receive an update? Do you have a scheduled meeting anytime before we vote on this?
We, I've reached out to Mark Carter, we're, we're communicating now, trying to organize when, not only Vice Chair, Chair Meetings and Self-Meetings, but also when staff are going to meet with their staff to collaborate and continue that communication. So once we do that, we'll provide an update.
Because this will be Monday a week from today, it'll be January probably before we meet with them.
But we know that the CIP is, we vote on it, and we know for sure it's for one year out, and then as things change, we can go back and change the...
We won't know if they approve until...
That's correct. They would, if they approve the CIP as it is right now, then there would be no need to make any changes. But if they move the elementary school back, then you wouldn't have the money to move on that anyway, so you would have to wait until... So, you would have to wait until that became available. And I think that's where these discussions are going to be so important because if, if you do, in fact, improve the CIP as it is presented to you at, tonight, then if, after those discussions take place and it's, and both the staff say, they come in agreement, say, yeah, all right, maybe we can push this back another year based on the additional information we have, then that would work out good with y'all too as well because you certainly don't want to build a school before it's needed.
Right.
And at the same time, you went to school here when you do need it. So, I think that's why the two staffs getting together with this thing would be very important.
And lastly, just that if we, if we don't get it on the CIP, that's a whole nother year before we're having this discussion again, which puts everything off another year, which means now we're looking at even four years before, you know, something would, for the doors would open, or possibly five. So, I think that we're hoping that this thing gets approved in such a way that it gets put on the CIP, then it can be moved around like Dennis said. So, all right, any other discussion on that? All right, FY 2016 budget outlook, crystal ball time.
That's right. That's right. At this time, Dennis Jarrett's going to provide our budget outlook, but please understand all this information that we're sharing is preliminary at this point. So, we'll let Mr. Jarrett start on his presentation.
Oh, wrong one.
He's going to do program of studies first before.
Yes, indeed.
He's going to say it's out.
There you go.
Well, thank you, Dr. Shandor, for that introduction. And school board members, you're probably very familiar with this time of the year. Every year in December, we do this, we roll out. And this year is really not a whole lot different than last year, except that we do have just a little bit more information, not a whole lot, especially at the state level because, you know, it's the second year of the biennium for the state. So, we do have a little bit of information dealing with the second year of the biennium. And I'll talk about that in a few minutes. But I want to go over some, I guess you might say, some historical information first, just kind of remind everybody where we've been over the last five, six years because we've really had a tough go of it. And I think it's important that we, we keep that in as a backdrop item for us. And also, we're going to talk about some projected revenue information, very preliminary data. And then we'll also talk about some very preliminary expenditure information. So, everything I'm going to be telling you tonight, for the most part, is, is right now preliminary. And I can't tell you it's, it's going to come to that, it's going to be exactly the way I present it. But what is important, though, is some of these variables we're talking about are going to, in fact, change in terms of what we'd look at for FY '16 in terms of revenues and expenditures. So, that I can tell you for certain. Okay, let's, let's take a, take a step back and, and look at fiscal year 10 through 13. This is the same slide I prepared a year ago. I didn't change it. It's the same slide. And I'm just going to mention a couple of things here. Over the period of fiscal year 10 to fiscal year 13, state revenue was down $11.7 million. So, what that says is, over that period of time, we got $11.7 million less in state revenue. That really was the framework in which created, you guys, put you in a situation where you had to really adjust your budget significantly downward. And I want to take you down to the third bullet, which says, as a part of that process during that period of time, you had to reduce, or you reduced 125 permanent full-time positions out of your budget. And, and that's been a struggle. That's been a struggle even, it's a struggle today as we work through our budgets and we work through our staffing. What even more important is, in that period of time, you provided no raises, no step increases and no position regrades for staff. And that's, that's very bothersome and I know for all staff and I know it is for you as well. But we weren't by ourselves in that. Most other school division, county, city, and, and the state of Virginia was in the same boat as we were. So, that, that's really nothing new that we haven't seen before. And it's really something that I think every locality and every school division in this state is trying to do something to regain the ground that was lost with that. In FY '14, we received a $300,000 increase in state revenue, which is basically minimal, that's a six tenths of a percent. And we did receive a, a operating contribution increase from the board of supervisors of $1.2 million. What was important about that year was your health insurance went up by 17.2%. That was a significant bump. The year prior to that, it had gone up as well. You, you provided a 2% increase for your employees and that was no step, you just increased the skills for the staff by 2%. So, that was the first true raise, if you will, they had received in five years. And then as a part of that, to make all that balance out, you cut 19 permanent positions. I did not list all the reductions that you made because if you remember, you made significant reductions to textbooks, technology, buses, a host of other areas. And I'm not listing all those things, I'm just really hitting some of the key points. In FY '15, the year that we're in right now, we received a $2.9 million increase in state revenue. That looks good, but the problem was, we had a mandated VRS rate increase of $1.8 million. So, that left you about a one, a little over a million dollars to work with in state revenue. The county contribution increased by $880,000, but your budget, in fact, did go up from that reduced amount by 3.2%. And continuing on with FY '15, your health insurance rates decreased by 3%. Now, that is significant because that's the first time there's been a decrease in health insurance in the school division in a number of years. And we can attribute that to really two things. One, our large claims went down in FY '15. If you recall, prior to that, our large claims were really driving some large increases for us. The second thing, you adjusted the health insurance plan that year. We, if you will, we instituted a more cost containment program and that is paying off for us too. So, this year, you actually had a rate reduction in health insurance. You passed a rate reduction for the employee on to them, so that helped them on their take-home pay. You also provided a 3.1% increase in pay raises for employees and that was packaged as a step, a current step, a scale adjustment. And then, of course, for teachers, there was a new pay plan instituted. And again, you had to, you cut more positions out of the budget to make that happen, that was 16 permanent positions. Now, just to go through some very quick linear graphs here, because I, I do believe a picture can tell a lot, a major story here. So, if we look at, this is your operating budget from FY '06 all the way through '15. I think there's a couple of key points with this. If you look at right here, the 104 million dollars, that was in FY '06. Then it went up to $124 million. That was your peak in '09, okay? It dropped here. And that was really the, if you recall, FY '11 was really the most challenging year we had to deal with. We, we had VRS rate increases going on, we had health insurance rate increases going on, state revenue was going down. You had to cut a significant number of those positions in that year. You've slowly gained ground, but that's misleading. When you look at that chart, it looks like, okay, the budget has gone up from 115 to 126 million dollars. What that's not showing you is, your VRS contribution during that same period went up $12 million. So, technically, if you look at that, your budget has not increased really at all.
You lost it.
You've lost ground, you've lost ground. Because if you take the VRS out and the health insurance out, you've actually, you're spending probably less than the FY '06 level that you're working with. And I can show you some additional information in a minute on that. Now, I like this graph. This is a graph, you remember this one from last year? Yes, I see, Ms. Kurski has it. I put this in there last year and I updated it this year for the most current information. And I, I'm going to just really take you to the, to the whole crux of this, this chart. If you look at the red line, if you look at that in 2009, okay, that was when we had our peak budget here. Think about that. That was when we were peaking in state revenue too. Well, what we have had occur since FY '09 all the way to 2015 were increases in health insurance and even more importantly, increases in VRS. From that period of time, from 2009, 2015, you had over $12 million increases in VRS. So, what that red line does was say, okay, what's the cumulative cost of the health insurance and the VRS that we've had to pay over that period of time, 2009, 2015? Take that number, subtract it out from the current year budget, so now your budget is $106 million. Now, why is that important? Because I, I'll tell you why I think it's important, is that VRS and that health insurance did not give you any new programs, didn't give you any new staff, it did nothing but keep us going on the status quo with our retirement plans and our health insurance. So, you've, you've got over $12 million put into two programs that really did nothing for programs for the school division in terms of educational programs.
Right.
So.
And we're still not finished with.
And we're still not finished. Yes, you're exactly right. Now, the good news is, this year, we don't have anything to be concerned about, but it's coming back next year in the next biennium. So, I, this graph, I think, is really important because it really sets the stage for, if you look at, look at 2006, the budget is $104 million, $106 million in 2015. So, we're really spending very close to the 2006 level in, in our budget, which is phenomenal when you think about the things that we've been able to do, given that. And that, a lot of that, had been some trade-offs in that though, because I know that, I know the school board and I know staff feels this way and that there's some things that we gave up, we've got to get back. We've got to get back textbooks, we've got to get back buses, we've got to get back technology and we've got to get back some compensation for our folks. All four of those things, we've lost in, lost ground in, but we've got to gain that ground back. Okay, this is what, what was going on with state revenue during that whole period of time. So, if you look at it, state revenue really went at its lowest level in 2011 and it's been fairly flat that whole period of time. And by the way, this graph is pretty consistent with what other school divisions would be looking at in this state. So, the point of this is that a major part of our problem over the last probably five to six years has been given to us by the state reductions that we've been working with. And it's not just a York County issue, that's a statewide matter that we're working on.
Dennis, to just piggyback on that, and I think it's important just to make sure that citizenry out there understands, as a state lowered their reductions, reduced our appropriation across the entire, well, not just ours, but everyone's, you know, it, they were passing the buck to the local taxpayer.
Excellent.
They were passing the buck to the local city council or in our case, to board supervisors. And because they knew that we were going to have to reach out and ask for the funding or at least some recovery of some of the funding from our local governing body and which just, it puts the pressure to the local level. The state, in some cases, did not step up where their, their priority changed, whatever, you know, yes, the economy was taking some hits, but I think that the priorities shifted a little bit in this process and we've seen some reductions because of, I mean, look what they did with the lottery dollars. I mean, instead of something that we would receive, as a matter of fact, there was an article about this in a paper not long ago. I mean, and I'm glad somebody finally wrote something about it because used to, I mean, we took half our lottery dollars, we put them in operations, but the other half, we used them one-time expenditures and we were able to do some things and take some things off the CIP, which was debt service savings for the county. And then what happens? They fold the lottery money into the general operating budget for the state and surplant monies, what they were doing, and there went that money.
There has clearly been a shift of responsibility from the state to the local government. There is no question about that. And, and I think that's a problem for a lot of reasons because it really, it, it puts the local board of supervisors and city councils up against the wall because they look like they're not doing their fair share. But in fact, they may be doing their fair share, but they're trying to pick up what the state has reduced us by. And it's a difficult, difficult position for them to be in. You're exactly right. And I think that, well, I know this to be a fact. I know VACO, VML, VSBA as well and other organizations have tried to make the point that all you're doing is passing this on to the local government. But, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a tough nut to crack if you be, just be plain about it because what happens is, the state general assembly has got the same kind of budget issues they've got going on, dealing with various facets of Medicaid as well as transportation costs. So, they're trying to balance their budget out. So, what happens is, they have to make some calls on their own. But unfortunately, those reductions that we've had over the last five years have hit us probably more so than other state agencies. I think that's one of the concerns that we as a group have to be concerned about is that we need to raise, keep raising that issue up, that we don't mind taking our fair share of hits, but don't give us more than what we, you know, should be taking relative to other, other state agencies. And I have to tell you, this year has been, you know, FY '15, and I was going to talk about this in a minute, but FY '15, the state is receiving, they're all actually having a budget deficit right now. And they've held K-12 harmless in FY '15. And I think that's a very positive move on their part. And I, hopefully, that's maybe sending a more positive message to local governments and the local school divisions that there's more of a partnership going to be developed in that area. So, let's, let's hope that's the case. Okay, that's the background information. Let's start talking about some of the current data that we're going to be working with as we develop the '16 budget. '16 ADM projection, you heard this at the last work session, the joint meeting with the board of supervisors. The projected increase by the county planning department for FY '16 is 250 students. Now, that's based on budget to budget. Our budget right now is based on 12,420 students, the projection is 12,670 students. Okay, we actually have right now closer to 12,530 students. So, we already have exceeded our budgeted ADM for '15, which is a very positive thing for us, both for revenue this year, as well as, as we look to '16, it's not as big a jump as you would think it would be. We're not actually looking for 250 new students. We've already got 100 to 125 of those already here with us. But we get the budget for 250 because that's what the 2015 budget was based on of the lower number. Now, the ADM is a, it's a double-edged sword, if you will, because along with that, we get, we get additional state revenue for those additional students, but we also have additional costs that go with that. For example, staffing and materials and supplies for the students that they use in the classroom. So, there's additional costs that come with it, but at the same time, the revenue more than offsets the cost on an incremental basis. State revenue backdrop, you've heard this, there's a shortfall at the state right now. They overestimated their, their revenues. FY '15 for school divisions, they've held us harmless. They've also said in FY '16, there, there's no promise that that will take place. So, one of the things that we're watching very closely is, when the general assembly gets in session, is how are they going to deal with that reduction at the state level? Because the numbers that they've recently been talking about is between 270 and 300 million dollars, less state revenue than what they built the budget on a year ago. So, that's going to, we have to kind of keep an eye on that and see how that's going to play out. The FY '16 is the second year of the biennium. What that means is, any budget adjustments that take place will be done as amendments to the budget that was approved last year. Because remember, the state has a two-year budget. So, it'll be amendments to that, which is why it's only a 45-day session. Although, you well know that a 45-day session doesn't mean necessarily they'll be in session for 45 days. They can always go to a, an adjourned session after that and go on until May, and I've seen it not too many years ago in June, you probably recall that. And that, that makes it difficult when it comes to teachers' contracts and those kinds of things, but we, we certainly can't finish our budget unless we know how much state revenue we're getting. More state revenue information, I doubt very seriously there'll be any changes to the SOQs as we move into the '16 budget since it is a short session. However, if they do go in and, and look to reducing K-12 education, the way they typically do that is change the SOQ. So, that'll be something we'll be watching if they do start looking at making reductions. There'll be no re-benchmarking in this year since that was done last year. The, a big positive for us, there'll be no VRS rate increase in '16. That's done on a biennial basis. So, that is one thing that's off the table for us as we move into '16. So, we can all breathe easy on that one. And now, we do have to shift another 1% of the VRS to the employees. The good news about this, this will be the last shift.
Yes, time.
Virginia Beach and Suffolk will be the only two school divisions in this area that have not shifted to 5%. Everybody else shifted last year to 5. We will have shifted in '16 to 5. Virginia Beach and Suffolk, unless they pick up the other two that they need, they will be carrying it on to fiscal year '17. So, the good news is, we, we will get over this hurdle in '16 and that's going to be good for everyone for lots of reasons, recruitment being one of those. Okay, more state revenue information, that's positive. The composite index won't change the second year of the biennium, so we don't have any risk of that going up. Of course, last time, it went down for us a little bit. If Dr. George were here, he would probably say, well, is it going to go down in FY, in fiscal year '17? And I don't know if that's going to happen or not, but let's keep our fingers crossed and hope that it does. It's the potential, it has the potential for that to occur, but unfortunately, we won't know that until the numbers are ran for Northern Virginia, that, all the variables that go into the LCI. The LCI is extremely sensitive. I've talked about this every year, but back in 14, it went up from .3727 to .4049. That cost us $2.2 million, just that small percentage change there. So it's really sensitive. So that's one thing.
Can you give a quick, just for people that may be watching, what, you know, the local ability to pay, but that local composite index, I mean, some of these, we sow so many acronyms.
Yes, yes, sir.
SOQs, the standards of quality, I mean, obviously, if we operated at a standard of quality level, we would have the most pathetic school division in the Commonwealth. So no one operates at that level. But they fund us at a level.
That's right.
That has to be back-funded by the school, I mean, by the local government, governing body, and the local composite index. These are just things that play such a...
They, they do, and, and you're exactly right. I'll just say about the standards of quality, they are so minimal. If I tell you how many teachers we have over the SOQ, the public would think, well, how can that be possible? But it is possible. We probably have close to 100 teachers over the SOQ level.
That goes into our budget.
That goes into our budget. 100%. They are not participating in that cost at all.
And all the benefits, what, what benefits?
Exactly right.
All the benefits go into that, that we pay.
And while we're talking about that, so people don't think, well, my goodness, they're, they're living high on the hog, let's say. I mean, that would make class sizes 30 to 1.
Oh, it would be, it would be beyond any acceptable level.
We would not have the division, it wouldn't even look anywhere close to what we have.
It would not look the way it is now completely, and it would be unacceptable to our public. I'll be honest with you, it'd just be unacceptable to them. The one area that, in the SOQs, that has really driven a lot of discussion, at least among finance people, is the support cost provision. They provide very little support for support operations in the school divisions. If we were getting our full support allocation that we got prior to the reductions in FY10, we would be getting about another $4 million. I mean, that's how significant that one item is. So I've, I've said many times, give us the support SOQ dollars back, keep everything else, but give us that support back. Because they really are passing this, the local support cost on to the local government. And that's how, it's kind of disheartening, because when you talk to folks at the state, they'll say, well, we're funding your school division at the SOQ funding level. And that, and that's the truth, they are. But it's so minimal that it's, it's unacceptable, the level of standard that we would be at if we only funded it, or if we only had the staff for the level of funding that they provided us. So who picks up the difference? Local governments do. And, and they have a right to be angry about that, and, and to lobby their legislators about, hey, look, you guys, the state needs to be picking up a fair share of this. But it is an issue. The LCI fits into all this, because the local composite index is the state's measure to determine what the local government's ability to pay is. So the higher the LCI, the less state revenue you get. So if you look at Williamsburg, for example, I always like to use them, their LCI is as high as it'll go. It's .8. So they, Williamsburg, James City schools get very little state revenue related to the Williamsburg students, because their LCI is so high. Northern Virginia, the LCI's are very high. So they get very little state revenue. Most of theirs is at the local level. We are somewhat at the, I would say, in the upper regions, and I've got a slide I'm gonna show you a little bit later, that will show you where we rank with other divisions. But we are considered to be a moderately high ability to pay locality at .4026, and I'll give you some comparative data in a few minutes.
Thank you, Dennis.
You're welcome. Here it is right here. Okay. Local composite index. We are fourth from the top in what we consider to be our comparators in this region. Williamsburg is at .8, James City, .56, Virginia Beach is really close to us, and yet, look how low some of those others are. Look at Chesapeake, .36. If we were getting Chesapeake state revenue at .36, we'd probably be getting about another $5 or $6 million more in state revenue. That's how sensitive that thing is.
And is not Chesapeake one of the localities that we compare with? Is Chesapeake?
It is, that is. All of, we compare with all of these. Yeah, the thing about, and I didn't put this slide in the presentation, I, I thought about it, but I was trying to keep it moderately, I didn't wanna get to go on too long. But if I had to put the slide in here about our per pupil cost, it would be completely opposite.
Yes.
Our per pupil cost this year, we're, we're second from last. So we spend less per pupil, but the ability to pay is really close to the top. So these are important things that...
It's last.
This year, it was Suffolk. Suffolk, it was, yes. It was the first time we haven't been last in a number of years, and the difference between us was very minor, but it was different. Okay, looking at some key dates with state revenue. December 17th, that's when the governor will release his amendments to the proposed, to the budget that was approved last year by the General Assembly. That's a key date for everybody in the state, because that will give us our first reading of what's being proposed for the reductions, if there are gonna be any reductions proposed for K-12 education. Then after that, the General Assembly will convene on January the 14th, and then, of course, the General Assembly is slated to close on February the 27th. So that is the state schedule as it exists now. And I would say that the General Assembly has, in recent years, not met their goal of journeying at the time they're supposed to. Whether that'll happen again this year remains to be seen. But of course, as you well know, you have to approve your budget in March. So whatever, if you think about last year, we didn't have a budget by the, from the state at the time you approved your budget, so we just went with the governor's proposed. And, and actually, we turned in, it came in very close to that, very close. So, but we just don't know, so we have to kinda keep an eye on that. But in January, we'll be providing you an update on the revenue that is in the governor's proposed budget. Let's move on to the federal level now. December the 11th is the, the date that the continuing resolution that the federal government is under right now for funding FY15. Now, FY15 is the year that the feds are operating under right now, the same budget that we are operating under for Impact Aid. So we don't know what our Impact Aid allocation is gonna be for this year, much less for FY16. The continuing resolution, I, I, I don't know, I've been following this in a number of newspapers, and I have to tell you, I don't know where it's gonna fall. I don't know if they're gonna approve a budget that is, carries us for the full year, or are they gonna do another extension to the continuing resolution to push it into January, February? No one really knows, at least the press isn't reporting it if they, if they do know. And so we just have to kinda keep our eye on this. The second bullet is an important one, because as you heard, Mr. Cross stated at the last joint work session, the renovations are finished at Bethel Manor. So that means all those homes now are either filled or gonna be filled very shortly. And we've been able to count those students that were displaced in our Impact Aid camp. That ended last year, because as of our survey date this year, there were no, there were no buildings under renovations, no homes under renovations. So last year was the last year we'll be able to count those students. Now, under theory is that those students are now back with us, living in those homes and those kinds of things. One, one negative item for tonight is the Impact Aid. It looks like we're gonna have to budget about $300,000 less for that. And I guess the, the real bad news is, I think that's gonna be something we're gonna have to look at in the out-years as well. We've been living off of prior year payments for a number of years. The federal government's getting caught up on those prior year payments. So as that happens, our level of revenue is gonna start lowering on the, on the Impact Aid. And also, the budget sequestration hit Impact Aid, not as bad as it hit other programs, but it did hit Impact Aid in FY13, and a little bit in 14 and 15. The good news is, we also get what's called DOD funds. This is not the DODEA grant. This is DOD money that we get, because 20% of our students are military-connected, okay? We get this money from the Department of Defense. We are one of five school divisions in the state to get this. So we are just a handful of us, but it's been around since 1991, and hopefully it will continue to exist in the out-years. And that increase of $71,000 is based on what we got this year. So that's, that's not a number that's projected forward. It's based on the amount that we got paid this year.
Mr. Jarrett, do you know how that percentage is looking, or is there any kind of forecast for that percentage with the military drawdown? And a lot of civilians and contractors are losing jobs on the federal installations. So is that percentage expected to decrease?
We are well above the percentage in your county, but I will tell you, there are a couple of school divisions that are teetering on the edge of that, and it could very well push them out of this particular facet of the program. You're exactly right, because, you know, your county, we have, we have the highest percentage of students that are federally connected of any school division in the state. 42% of our students are connected to the federal government, and that's not all military. About, it's like 23, 24% are military-connected. But we have the highest percent of federally-connected students in the state, which is 42%. So we've got, we've got a lot of flexibility on that, but some school divisions do not, and I think you're right. Some of them, with a significant drawdown, could find themselves not getting these dollars. Which is not a good thing, because we like to try to keep as many people involved in it as possible, because that kinda fosters up the, the support of Congress with that. But that's one of the things that, that could very well happen.
Mr. Jarrett.
Yes, sir.
I hate to interrupt you, but before you leave this federal Impact Aid and DOD, the second bullet now, last year's county, Bethel Manor students coming back. I believe I picked up a comment during that discussion that that housing development will now be opened up not only to Air Force, but any other military, which would have been Fort Eustis.
Yes, sir. There are already Fort Eustis families living on Bethel Manor. They have opened that up. So they're, they're living there now.
They haven't opened it up to civilians now?
No, no, not to civilians. No, 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 military.
Just military folks from the army or...
Right, right. Okay, federal revenue continued. Sequestration has been cured, if you will, for FY14 and 15, but for 16, it could very well come back, because Congress, as you remember, they had 10 years of sequestration. And they worked out a budget deal in 14 that would carry them through for 14 and 15. But for 16, it comes back on the table, and this is what you're hearing the, the military community talk about right here, is because there's a concern that if that sequestration does kick back in in 16, that's gonna have a dire effect on the military community and on, well, across the board, all federal programs, all federal programs. So, you know, we'll just have to keep an eye on that and hope that something changes like it did for 14 and 15. Now, I don't wanna mislead you, because even though 14 and 15 was, I used the word cured, that was, it was not completely solved. There's still reductions that took place. It just wasn't at the level that the sequestration was requiring it to be. So there were still reductions, they just weren't at that same level. And then, of course, if sequestration were to hit in 16, that would not only hit Impact Aid, it would hit every federal program that we have, including Title I and Title 6B, all of those programs. Let's move over to the county funding. As you well know, we don't know what that's gonna be at this time. We do not have any kind of a funding formula. So it basically is a, a number that the board of supervisors and their deliberations come, come through with, and we have to balance our budget within whatever that number comes out to be. Looking at some detailed information now. We're looking at the, first looking at the revenue piece. And if you look at the state revenue, what I did was, I said, what if we were to get the amount of money that the General Assembly approved a year ago, the second year of the biennium, given the number of increased students we have projected, which is 250? If we were to build that into the formula, we would get $1.3 million, okay, additional state revenue. We can't say that today, though, because we don't know what that reduction is gonna look like if they do reduce us at the state level for any of the revenue shortfall that they're dealing with. So what I did was, I did a really, this is not a best-case, worst-case scenario, this is just a range, if you will. So I said, what if it was a 3% across-the-board reduction in all state revenue versus a 2% increase in all state revenue? What would it look like? That would be a range of $1.3 million increase to a $1.9 million reduction. I don't think it's gonna be either one of those numbers. I think it's gonna be somewhere maybe in between that, or maybe a little bit less than that with the 1.3. What could make it more than 1.3 is, what if they didn't make change, pass any of the reductions on to local school divisions, and they were able to do something for teacher salary increases? If you remember, they haven't approved a teacher salary increase in years. If they were to do that, then that $1.3 million could go up. So just for, I guess you might say, for presentation purposes, I'm just using these two, this range, if you will. The federal Impact Aid will go down by $300,000. The increase in the DOD heavily impacted, which brings us down to a bottom-line range, and I, I'll be the first to admit, that is a huge spread. It's really just as an informational item, or anything else, of the kind of range that we could be looking at. Now, to bring that into context for you, let's start looking at some expenditure items. Employee compensation, we, as we shift the next, the last 1% of the VRS, there's an employer cost for the tax piece of that, that's $150,000. And if you continue to hold, or try to hold the employee somewhat harmless, if you will, there's a .10 of a percent cost of doing that, that's $76,000. So right there, you've got, you know, what, $226,000 in additional costs that are related to a mandate from the state to shift that 1% over to the employee. Other items, health insurance. I am so pleased, I, I, I don't even really know how to, how to begin to talk about this one, except to say, this is a, this is truly a remarkable event we got here. We have two years now of reductions in our health insurance. This year, it's higher than it was a year ago, a 3.6% reduction in health insurance rates. I can tell you that the, the large claims have gone down again. We are, we are now probably $300,000 less in large claims than we were this past year. That's a very positive thing. What's even more positive is our large medical claims are down. Now, when we looked at the data, it was interesting, because our drug costs are up, up like 27%, but our large medical claims are only up like 7%. So what we've kinda, we're, we're reaching the determination on is that maybe people are being more proactive about their health. And they're getting on, if they have a high blood pressure or cholesterol, high cholesterol numbers, they're looking at ways to control that with medication, and they're foregoing having to have any major medical procedures go on. So we see this as all positive. But the truth of the matter is, right now, and the Anthem actuaries have said they're gonna reduce our rates by 3.6% next year. Now, this $381,000 is what we save as the employer. I have not put up on the screen the savings to the employee, but if you were to pass the 3.6 on to the employee, then they too would see an increase in their take-home pay, because they would have less taken out of their paychecks for health insurance. So I, but I did not put that up on the screen, but that would certainly be a very important advantage for our employees in a time when pay raises have not been forthcoming, at least not forthcoming to the level you would like them to be. The cost of a step for eligible staff, for all eligible staff, this is teachers and, and non-licensed staff, is $1.25 million. And a market adjustment for all employees is $760,000. So you can see, if you think back to my previous slide on the revenue piece, at 1.071, now, we've already, just adding up all these other things, we're probably up to close to about $1.8 million. So you can see, you're already looking at a gap. We're already looking at a budget gap here. Moving on, there are some other things we have to be concerned about in the school division. Of course, staff compensation is our highest priority, but we gotta be concerned about buses. We've gotta be concerned about our technology and our vehicle parts. One of the things that we've been, we've done is, we've not bought the replacement buses we need to be buying. We haven't bought the replacement vehicles, just the maintenance vehicles and other vehicles that are used. And so what's happening is they're aging, and so we need to buy more parts for those things. And so our Transportation Department is saying, look, the budget you have for parts is not cutting it anymore. We're gonna have to do something better. We were able to use some end-of-the-year money last year to kinda hold them, I guess you might say, whole in this process, but we need to get that built into the budget. So that'll be something you'll be looking at as we go through the budget process. Special education teachers, as you know, that's a state and federal requirement we have to work with on that, so we don't have a lot of latitude with that. That's, that's what I call mandated cost, and Mr. Mentor would say, what is that, another unfunded mandate, I believe is what you would say, and that's exactly right, it is. Because we don't get anywhere close to the federal or state dollars to cover our special education costs. Teachers for the additional enrollment, parent educators and materials, and then, of course, textbooks and educational materials. Those are all items. Now, they, those are gonna be prioritized as we move into this budget, as to, the superintendent will be looking at it and saying, okay, what is, what is gonna be most important for him? So as we go through this process, each one of these is gonna have a certain priority to them. But all of these, we have a need for all of this, and that's, but we're not gonna be able to do it all. So we're gonna have to look at ways to balance the resources we have within the constraints of, of the funding that we get. And then, the key dates that you have as a board, January 5th, we have a work session, and at that time, we'll, we'll provide you the updates on the 15E expected budget, if you will. And also, that will, we'll bring to you the governor's proposed revenue projections, because he will have released his budget at that point. And also, superintendent will be bringing to you some preliminary recommendations for expenditures at that time, so we can start formulating what would be the superintendent's proposed budget. Then in January, at your regular meeting, you'll hold a public forum on the operating budget. And that's just an opportunity for the public to come out and provide any input of things they would like to see in the budget. And then on February 3rd, you have another joint work session with the board of supervisors, and that will give you an opportunity to... and that will give you an opportunity to discuss with them some of the things that you now will know at that point in time that are priorities for you. So, I believe, yes, that's it. Any further questions? I think I hit all the key points I wanted to hit tonight. Yes, sir.
I noticed when we talked about reduction in personnel, that's not in one particular sector, that's usually across the board.
Yes, sir, it has been, now. I would, the only thing I would say about that is that in the first three years of reductions, from fiscal year 10, 11, and 12, we really did not hit the classroom. We hit outside of the classroom, and it just reached a point where we could no longer do that. So, in 14, 15, some of the reductions did include teaching positions.
And one other thing, there's been a lot of talk about an increase in E rates.
Yes.
Have you picked up anything on that?
We have, a little, a little bit of information, and one of the things that we're looking to do is, our information technology director is going to be contracting with a firm that does E rate calculations, and because the way the new, the rules are right now, it looks like we could see a little bit of a reduction in the E rate revenue coming to us. However, we're also optimistic that this new company is going to come in and maybe find some ways to recoup some of those revenue we're going to lose. So, there's a cost to doing that, but we think it's going to hopefully be beneficial to us to have this company come in and do this. Right now, it's being done by IT staff, and we feel like the complexity of this program has gotten so huge that we need expert people to come in and help us do that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Wow. Lot of information, Dennis.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you reflected back on the past, because I think that we need to continue to remind us as to how difficult it's been over the past, since 10, 2010, that we've dealt with issues and problems. And you are correct that we're going to, and our new superintendent will continue with staff, identify areas of reductions we've made, that, you know, the Band-Aids kind of stuck there, it's fallen off, and we've got to fix it, which can be challenging enough to find the dollars to do some of those, beyond the ones you've already identified. Any question?
Also, fresh eyes on the budget. If there are other places that can be cut to pay for compensation, textbooks, bus replacement, I mean, I think every year that I've been on the board, we've said, everything's up for grabs, we have to look through the entire budget, and we've got fresh eyes this year. So, I'm eager to find out what you come back to the table with as far as savings. I'm hopeful that the state will leave K-12 education untouched. I read an article where higher ed might be the place, because they could pass that on to parents paying tuition, any kind of increase there or cuts there. So, I'm going to try to be optimistic right now.
I agree, that's a good approach.
All right, any follow-up?
I don't have any other comments.
All right, well, that concludes our presentations. We only have one item, that's a consent, actually, it's an action, I believe in it, it's a consideration of a motion to approve an additional school-sponsored varsity activity at Bethel Manor High School, and authorize the school board chair and superintendent execute with the Virginia High School League membership application for 2014 and 15. So, I need a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the consent item.
Second.
Second, all right, any questions or comments? Any further information, everybody's read the packet on that. Okay, Mrs. Ford?
To approve additional varsity activity and the VHSL membership application. Mrs. Kershke?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
And Mr. Medford?
Yes, thank you. All right, that concludes everything we have under our special meeting part. We are going to be in a need of a closed session, so we want to take a short break first, and then come back and go into a closed session.
Yes, please.
We're going to take a short break.
And we will do a closed session here?
Yes.